All right, I got seven o'clock straight up, so good evening, everybody. Welcome to the May 11th City Council Meeting for the City of Citrus Heights. We will start off with the flag salute. And Mr. Albert Fox, would you mind leading us in the flag salute this evening?
Thanks, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Amy, if you would, go ahead and call the roll.
Councilmember Bruins.
President.
Councilmember Daniels.
Here.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Here.
And Mayor Slowey.
Here. Thank you.
This meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. This meeting is closed caption and webcast at www.citrusheights.net. Tonight's meeting replays on Monday, May 15th at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14, and a DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Thank you, Amy. All right, approval of the agenda. Anybody have any issues with the agenda? If not, I'll accept the motion to accept it as stands.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, four zero. First presentation, Amy, if you would read it for us, please.
Presentation number four is City of Citrus Heights 20 Year Celebration, the Top 20 Presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Rhonda Sherman, Community and Economic Development Director. I'm pinch hitting for Stephanie Cotter tonight, who has been pinch hitting for Devin Rodriguez, who will be back here presenting the June list.
She'll be back in the lineup.
So, as you know, throughout the year, we have been reviewing a list of top 20 things in Citrus Heights and part of our celebration of our 20-year anniversary. So, May, we have our oldest businesses, or businesses who have operated in Citrus Heights for the longest time. That was a little too long of a title. So, we are looking at our oldest businesses, and we receive many recommendations from the community, and here's our list. They span over six decades, starting with Harris Industrial Gases from 1936, and then we have Felipe's Mexican Restaurant, 1983. And you can see here, you know, through the '30s, '40s, '50s, '60s, lots in the '70s, and then the early '80s. And we know that there are probably businesses that belong in this list, and so if the public has any information that they are, would like to share with us, please do. Let us know if we've missed some businesses and we need to kind of add to the list. So, I'm going to highlight a couple. So, Harris Gas. Harold A. Harris opened Harris Welding Works in 1936. The first phone number for the business was 549-X, and the only address that could be placed on company advertising was one mile south of Roseville on US 40. Hall's Furniture and Appliances, located on Mariposa, was the first such store in Citrus Heights when it opened in the 1940s. Grand Opes Beauty Salon was built in the '60s along Auburn Boulevard, north of Silman Cemetery. The salon is still open today, although it has changed locations about 3.5 years ago. Sunrise Mall, looking very groovy, back in the '70s, was, they started construction in 1970, and it opened in 1972. Sunrise Rollerland, 1973, and here's a picture of, I think it was the opening ceremony, and I haven't been there in a while, but I'm wondering if those chandeliers are still there.
Oh, no.
No? And then finally, we have Great Clips. The first Great Clips in California opened in Citrus Heights off of Greenback Lane over 22 years ago. Dick and Patty Draper moved from Calif, to California from Minneapolis to open the first Great Clips location in Citrus Heights, and he's been in a, has been the owner since the opening in 1980.
Wow.
So, our next list is the top 20 natural scenic spots for people to enjoy, and we would like to collect these via social media, our new Facebook page, or through Twitter at City of C-H, I'm sorry, City of C Heights. We'd also would collect them, you know, through email. You can come to City Hall, just talk to any staff member, and we will be collecting those to reveal in June, and that'll be at the June 8th City Council Meeting.
Great. Thank you, Rhonda.
You're welcome.
For filling in. Next presentation, please.
Our next presentation, number five, is a proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights, proclaiming May 21st through 27th, 2017, as National Public Works Week.
Great, and I've asked Councilwoman Jeannie Bruins to assist me in read and present this. I believe Stuart Hodgkins.
Right. Are you here? Let's go down front.
Thank you.
I'll stand here, and we can look at each other. Well, every year in May, we celebrate Building Safety Month in Citrus Heights, which is very important to us, and so it's right in the middle of National Public Works Week, and that's being proclaimed the week of May 21st through the 27th. And so, it's, we acknowledge that public works is a very integral part of our everyday lives in Citrus Heights, and, you know, when it was working, we're not thinking about it. That's the beauty of public works. When it's not working, we're all over it, so, as citizens. And it includes such things as engineering, street maintenance, architecture, parking, traffic operations, urban forestry, which we are very dedicated to with our, with our urban forest and our tree program, solid waste collection and disposal, recycling, animal care, water distribution and conservation, sewer collection and treatment, dear to my heart, since I sit on the sewer board, drainage, fleet and facility maintenance and engineering, emergency awareness and preparedness. And so, we are very concerned about the health, safety, welfare, and quality of life of our citizens who depend upon these services, and the quality and the effectiveness that bring a great quality of life to our, our community. So, therefore, there's a few other whereas', but therefore, we are resolving that the week of May 21st through 22nd, as National Public Works Week in this city, and we urge our residents and our civic organizations to acquaint themselves with our Citrus Heights Public Works Services and Programs, and joining me and the rest of the City Council in saluting this city's dedicated public works professionals. And it's my honor to give this to our senior engineer, right? Did I say that right? Planner, senior.
Principal.
Principal engineer. Senior Principal Engineer, Stuart Hodgkins.
I'm interested. No, we're citizens. Thank you very much.
A couple of quick words.
Yes.
Please.
Mayor, council members, on behalf of the Sacramento Chapter of the American Public Works Association, I want to thank you and the city for acknowledging National Public Works Week that comes up just in a couple of weeks. This is, this is an event that APWA sponsored back beginning in 1960, so it's been going on quite a while. And I, being a lifelong member of the public work sector, believe wholeheartedly in acknowledging the work by engineers like myself and the others here in the audience this evening, as well as our field personnel that work with incredible dedication to keep our city functioning, as well as others around the region. This year's theme, Public Works Connect Us, connects us, is, truly speaks a lot about what public works does. It really builds and maintains those threads that keep us all together. As far as this year, the Sacramento Chapter acknowledges National Public Works Week. We go to all the regional agencies, such as the city, and ask that they put the word out publicly by acknowledging us with proclamations like this, and I think it's important to get the word out to the public for that reason, just to make sure everybody signs on, and it helps us do our jobs better when people understand what we do. And additionally, each year this week, actually, it'll be next week, the chapter holds an awards dinner where we'll honor local professionals in the field, as well as our field personnel, who show exemplary efforts around the community and around the region. And we also use the opportunity to raise funds for an education endowment fund that evening. And I'm happy to say this year, our city will be hosting this at our community center, and I enjoy the fact that we're having it there and showing off a wonderful facility for my organization. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Stuart. Next item, Amy.
The next item is presentation number six by the Sacramento Law Enforcement Chaplaincies and recognition of their 40th anniversary.
Great, and welcome, Chaplain Mindy Russell. I know you have a presentation, and then we have a proclamation, so we'll let you go first, and then I'll tell her.
Wow, okay, well, good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Thank you for letting me share with you a little bit about our organization that's been serving Citrus Heights forever. So, we are here for, sorry, it's not doing this. Don't take my minute away.
It's not you.
So, our organization's been around for 40 years, and what it has been for is to be able to serve first responders, our community members, in times when they are facing the worst times ever. Okay, so, we're just going to go on. So, I'm going to tell you a little bit about our past, what we're doing now, and what our future holds. Go ahead. So, our past history, a lot of people don't know how much we have done locally and internationally. But when we got started, we were recognized with a lot of the different things that we have done, like joining the dark team, working with things like Yosemite murders, good guys, all of the things that even went into a national profile of what we were able to help, the families, the Unabomber families, and the organizations that were impacted. Who's doing this? Who's flipping? Flip it, maybe. Okay, next. So, as you see, we do a lot of the, the normal things and the local, and we learned that really the success of the future is about our experience of the past. And what we've learned, that at ground zero, we were able to go there and provide for the people a way to help the 5,000 people in the Family Assistance Center. So, in 2002, John Ashcroft actually asked the law enforcement chaplaincy to write a curriculum for the United States Department of Justice to be able to teach how to help people in trauma, which is still being taught today by our, our organization. Continue. The other way around, yes, let's keep going. So, now presently, last year, we spent and served over 44,000 callouts. We responded with over 70,000 hours to give to the community. So, who are we? What are we? Where are we? Our vision is to bring hope to first responders and to the community, and so we're committed to serving anybody and everybody in the state of California, but locally as well. One of the biggest things that you need to know about this organization is we're constitutional chaplains, meaning we can work with the government, meaning that there's a secular purpose. So, as you see at the bottom, it says at the level of the law enforcement chaplain's trauma care services, it is not religious. We are actually there to be able to help people, religiously neutral, apolitical, to be able to help people in the worst times of their lives. If you see the different colors, it's because we work with first responders, the gray and the black, and the burgonies work with the community. We do all kinds of things outside of trauma, which is baby dedications, weddings, visits, funerals, and counseling, and of course, we work in the extremes. All of those things that you read about in the newspaper, all of those things that you hear on the news, we respond 24/7/365. Because of the fact that we're trained and we have our own academy, the nation has come to us to be trained, and we now have even organizations outside of the United States that have been trained by the law enforcement chaplaincy in Canada, as well as Jamaica. So, we've been available for 40 years, 24/7/365. We're accessible by one number. That's been around for 25 years, and when law enforcement calls, schools calls, community calls, that's the number they call, and they get a live person, 24. These are all the trainings that every one of your chaplains have to go through before they can be called a chaplain. So, you can see, it's pretty intensive with 150 hours just gone through the academy, plus all of the other trainings that you're seeing below. So, every month, they go for training, and every one of the law enforcement chaplains are ordained, licensed, or commissioned so that they can have that privileged communication for our officers and families, and then the community chaplains keeps confidences. So, that's our stats from last year, so you can see, as I said, all of that, when you think of the value of a volunteer hour is $27.59, we actually gave back to our community Now, our future, this is the last slide, our future is going to be towards excellence by increasing certified trained chaplains for our families, our schools, our churches, our businesses, to continue providing the education in a proactive way, and to be the best in helping people. And there you are. I'm sorry for that little glitch there.
That's all right. We're only as good as our technology. Our fault. It worked rehearsal.
So, do you have any questions about what we do, who we are, or where we're going?
How many chaplains do you have presently?
We have about 125. We have two more academies starting the end of this year, so we should probably have getting back up to 150.
And how long do they serve?
This is an amazing program, that it's not just a volunteer program, that's another thing to do. This is quite a sacrifice, because they pay for everything to do what they do, but most of our volunteers stay for at least five years. Most of, I have probably 20% of them that's been with me for 10 years or more.
That's amazing. Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No, thank you. Mindy? So, thanks for coming, Mindy. 40 years, that's pretty impressive. I know you haven't been around for that whole time.
No.
But I just want to give you a personal shout out for your department, and that, you know, a couple of weeks ago, we suffered our own internal tragedy when one of our council members passed away, and your agency sent somebody out here to not only talk with the council members, but staff, and hearing from staff, they spend a lot of time talking to staff throughout the day, so thank you for that. So, it isn't just first responders, it's, you know, one of the things that I think of when I think of your organization is truly compassion, you know, for whatever the reason you need to be there. You don't judge, you're just there to assist the people go through whatever they go through.
Right.
And so, we do have a proclamation, again, for 40 years. I'm going to read a couple of them, but I'm not going to read the whole thing. It says, whereas the Sacramento law enforcement chaplains provide law enforcement families a trusted source of confidence and encouragement during traumatic events, and whereas the Sacramento law enforcement chaplains have a genuine calling to this kind of work while demonstrating a number of other personal, intellectual, and practical characteristics, they have compassion for every human being, pardon me, even those most unlike themselves. And again, that's what struck me. It really is, you know, you have to like what you do to do what you do. So, now therefore it be resolved, the City of Citrus Heights hereby honors the Sacramento Law Enforcement Chaplaincy on the occasion of its 40th anniversary, and thank you very much for coming out.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Steve.
And I'd be remiss if I didn't thank you for the cupcakes, too. She brought cupcakes when she came, so. All right. Next item is comments by council members and regional board updates. So, I am going to start with Jeannie, then go Brett and Steve.
Okay. So, I'm going to take a little look back and then a little look forward. So, starting on the 3rd of May, our PAL board held their first retreat. They held an all-day retreat facilitated by Marilyn Snyder, who is this facilitator that does retreats with the council twice a year, and we felt we had matured enough as a, as a nonprofit, and we had talked about lots of different goals over the years, that we needed to have this cohesive exercise to help us really zone in on what our priorities were. And I just want to say that the board showed up in spades and did a great job, and I'm particularly grateful to the police officers that gave them their time to go through this exercise, because I know this isn't something they do every day. And as a result, I think you're going to see a, an even better agency than you have seen in the past. We're going to be able to reach more kids, we've set our goals, and I was very excited and thankful that our president, Lieutenant Jason Russo, bought into this plan and that we were able to do that. And then, two days later, I attended, along with a number of our council members, I think Steve was there, in our police department, the public safety luncheon, and I was extremely delighted to learn that, they give an award every year called Service Above Self, that our very own detective, Dave Jones, won that award, and this is given by the Sacramento Downtown Rotary Club. And, and he, no one deserves it more than he does, because he does such a phenomenal job with our youth through, through the PAL program and on his own. He's so dedicated to the youth of this community, and it was a delight to have the entire region honor him for that. And then, much less exciting, but yesterday, I went to the sanitation board meeting, and we approved both budgets for regional sand and for Sacramento area sewer district, and then we had, as you know, we're in the middle of this big build out, out at the plant, and we have very large contracts, and the multiple millions of dollars. I think we've already completed a half a billion dollars' worth of, of contracts that have been awarded and are in some, some area of completion process. As a result of that, you know, a couple of times, the, the losers, if you will, have, have issued a protest. They have, and so, we, we formed a subcommittee to take a look, an advisory committee, just to take a look at our, our process, to kind of tighten it up so that going forward, we don't have these protests that come before the board, once the contract has been, has been let, at least to make it less likely. So, everything kind of went through, we, we hired an outside firm, and they went through their due diligence process, and came back with seven recommendations, and they all kind of went through. The only one that was, has been not approved, and more work is being done on, which I thought I would share with you, is the, what they call the cone of silence. Now, does anybody remember that term?
Yes. Get smart.
Exactly. So, I'm a, kind of a little, it's, I don't know, I think it's kind of a goofy term for it, because I always think of get smart, but the bottom line is, is that it's to provide a period of time where, where bidders aren't harassing or contacting council, or board members, trying to influence their vote, basically. And so, so, we kind of massaged that a little bit yesterday, and it's going back for some more work, but I think it's going to come back to us, I think, at the next board meeting, and then that, it will, it will tighten up that ability for, for bidders to reach outside of a public board meeting where we do our business to try to influence particular board members to their cause. So, happy to see that, just needs a little bit more work. So, now, that was it going back. Now, going forward, I've got a couple of PAL events that I want to bring up to your attention, and there are flyers in the back as well. The first one, it looks like this, is on Friday, May 26th, our police department, along with some of our metro firefighters, are taking on the high school basketball teams from Mesa Verde and San Juan High School for a benefit charity basketball classic. It's going to be at the Mesa Verde Large Gym, Friday, May 26th, starting at 6:00 p.m. $10 for adults, $5 for kids, and you don't have to just have hot dogs that night. Wild Wade's Barbecue and Grill is going to be there for food. So, I, I've been to one or two of these in the past, and they're a lot of fun, and most of the time, the kids whip the adults, but you never know. So, give that a thought. And secondly, on June 11th, there's a flyer in the back, looks like this, is our first annual team trap shoot competition. It's going to be on Sunday, June 11th. All the proceeds go to PAL, to help support the programs of PAL, and in addition to, if you're not a trap shooter, there are other things to do, there are things for the kids, there's raffle prizes, there's a silent auction, there's a major prize raffle, and what they call an open class competition. And not being a Marx person myself, I don't know what that is, but if you, if you partake in these kind of events, you do. And also, this is being done in connection with the Citrus Heights Chamber of Commerce Leadership Class. They've taken this out as their community project, so, oh, DeMarcus Cousins will be there. Oh, no, DeMarcus Cousins Autographed Basketball will be there.
Yeah, we traded. We traded that guy.
Slight difference.
Yeah.
All right, and then finally, before I get too off on that, I got Lieutenant Russo laughing at me in the back. This is another event, this is May 20th, coming up a week from Saturday. It's called Walk on the Wild Side, and every year, this is put on by the sanitation district, and outside, surrounding the wastewater treatment plant in Elk Grove are 3,500 acres of wild life, wild buffer lands that buffer the, the treatment plant from the surrounding Elk Grove community, and it is truly a beautiful natural setting. I will tell you, there are no odors, so if you worry about sewage odors, you won't, they won't be there, but they have live music, wetland tours, conservation exhibits, live animal presentations, and hands-on activities for the kids. They put it on every year, and it's from 10:00 to 4:00 p.m., 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., Saturday, May 20th, and there's flyers in the back on all three of these events. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeannie. Mr. Daniels.
Oh, I have one more.
Nope, you're done.
Oh, please. I forgot. I even brought it to, did we all get this today? Okay. I went through my, my cupboards in the kitchen to see if I had anything to donate. This is where we put the sack out by our mailbox on Saturday, and the mailman or woman will pick it up, and all the food that you put in here will be donated to the hungry. And I can't believe what I had in my cupboards that I was able to get rid of, that someone will enjoy, that I shouldn't be eating anyway. So, don't forget to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Brett. Thank you. Yeah, since our last meeting, I had the pleasure to attend an event, The Taste of Citrus Heights, I think is what was the name of it, and first time, and they put together an amazing program, an amazing meal. Restaurants and other places all throughout Citrus Heights provided the food and beverages, and it was quite incredible, and the best thing about it is that it benefits our law enforcement families, our members and our, and their families with the program. And if you missed it, make sure you get it, get to it next year, because it was absolutely outstanding. And then, a couple of days ago, attended the Citrus Heights Chamber Luncheon with Steve and Jeannie, I believe, yeah, and got a presentation from the president of American River College. And, you know, when, I don't know, I grew up here, and I, for me, American River College is that little tiny college over there in the corner, and he, he set us straight with that, and they do an amazing thing over there, and so, it's, it's one of the jewels of the Sacramento area, and it was really nice to hear that information. That's it.
Thank you, Brett. Steve?
Right after our meeting, our last meeting, attended the Cap to Cap, and the highlight for me was hearing from Supreme Court Anthony Kennedy, and he spoke to our Sacramento delegation. I took appointments on the transportation team, and they were more on the rail side, light rail and, and streetcar. And then Mayor Slowey, City Manager Boyd, and I had a good meeting with our Congressman Amy Barra, and I'll stop on this subject. for me was hearing from Supreme Court Anthony Kennedy, and he spoke to our Sacramento delegation. I took appointments on the transportation team, and they were more on the rail side, light rail and streetcar. And then, Mayor Slowey, City Manager Boyd, and I had a good meeting with our Congressman Amy Bera, and I'll stop on this subject, so you'll have something to report, Jeff. And, yeah, the last Friday, did attend the Public Safety and Community Appreciation Lunch. And on Monday, we had the Regional Transit Meeting. The first item, we delayed a decision on naming rights for stations and light rail lines. I think we need a little more discussion and thought on that. But the premise is that for small nominal fee, actually a large nominal fee, you can have the rail line named after you, like, you know, the Kaiser Blue Line, for example. And so, they're going to come back with some more refinement on the language of how we do that. We approved fair zones for all light rail stations, and we had a test program where there's an area designated by signs that you need a paid fare, and it allows our fare inspectors to ask you, hey, you got a ticket before the light rail train gets there? And if not, you're encouraged to get one, and/or move along. And we also had a discussion on the streetcar project financing, and that was just an informational item. They're going to come back later. One of my concerns is that the JPA hasn't been formed for the streetcar project, so RT's supposed to be contracting with this JPA, but the JPA hasn't been formed yet, so I feel more comfortable when all the i's and lowercase j's are dotted and the t's crossed. Had the chamber lunch on Tuesday. Brett, you already talked about that. Wednesday, Jeff and I attended the Citrus Heights Rotary Club, and tonight, over at...
Rush Park.
Rush Park, the Stop Hunger Now event. I'm going to head over there right after this meeting, so I'm expecting the rest of you to follow me. It's in the gym over at Rush Park. And they're assembling meals for, from their hands to their tummies, is the, and they're expecting to, hoping to do 25,000 meals, prepackaged, so.
You made that sound like it's going to their own tummies there, Steve.
I know. I was trying to read the flyer, and it's how it's worded, so. To someone else's tummies that really needs it. And that brings us up to now, so.
Thanks, Steve. All right. As Steve mentioned, the three of us were in Washington last week. On behalf of the city, we did meet with Amy Bera, as well as Congressman Matsui. You had talked about the streetcar. I know Congresswoman, sorry, not Congressman, Congresswoman Matsui did put into the budget that was extended, so last Friday, $50 million for the streetcar, JPA aside. It's a $170 million project, so.
It's...
Good for the region.
Two hundred now.
Two hundred, okay. And it'll be more by the time they get it built.
Yes.
So, yesterday, I spoke at the local Citrus Heights Kiwanis Club, good group of folks. Also had this SAC public library audit committee, where we talked about the budget for next year. Fortunately, property taxes are up, so that means the library gets to purchase more material. It's all good. Tomorrow, I will be in an all-day retreat for the GSAC board that I sit on, Greater Sacramento Economic Council. As a reminder, Saturday, just up the street, at the community center, there is a memorial service for our past council member, Mel Turner. It's 11 to 2:00 PM. Two other quick things. The 18th, which is next Thursday, reminder that the senior health fair is also at the community center. It's 9:00 to 1:00 AM. I don't know what qualifies as a senior in their definition, age-wise, but everybody's welcome. I guess you just technically have to be a senior to go, but it does say senior health Also want to give a special shout-out, within the CHPD, in particular, the dispatch department, Amy Rumfeldt was named dispatcher of the year. She's been with the Citrus Heights Police Department since its inception, so congratulations on that. And there is a nice little article, The Connections, that's mailed to everybody's residents. You can read more about Amy in there. I think I've said this before, but I'll mention it a couple more times between now and then. Effective August 12th of this year, Sacramento County, Citrus Heights included, will be getting a new area code. Anybody who gets a new phone number will fall into the new 279 area code. Amy, if I give you this, can we figure out how to link it to our website or put something out there? Because it gives the dates, again, through August 12th is when it takes effect. Any new number gets that. You can continue to dial the number without the area code, but effective February 10th of next year, if you don't have the correct area code in front of it, it won't work. So, for all of you who have cellphones and just hit the little name, you'll have to make sure those are programmed correctly as we move forward. We do have an update later. I'll let City Manager Boyd give the update to the dignity health building across the street. So with that, I will end my updates, and next item. Amy?
Next item is public comment, and members of the audience may address the council on any item of interest to the public and within the council's purview, or on any agenda item before or during the council's consideration of the item. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, fill out a speaker identification sheet and give it to myself, the city clerk. When you're called upon to speak, step forward to the podium and state your name for the record. Normally, speakers are limited to five minutes each, with 30 minutes being allowed for all comments. And any public comments beyond the initial 30 minutes may be heard at the conclusion of the agenda, and the mayor has the discretion to lengthen or shorten the allotted times.
Thank you, Amy. So we have one public speaker, William Nielsen, I think that's how you pronounce it. And sir, I know this is a follow-up to an email you sent earlier in the week, so please step up, and you'll have five minutes to address us.
Did the city clerk give you Exhibit A and B?
Did, sir.
Okay. Okay. Like I said, my concern basically is parking, well, basically, placing recycle cans in front of the fire hydrants. As they told me, they can't really do anything about it. But, and on those, on the Exhibit B, if you notice, there, the spigots are pointed out towards the recycle cans. And on Exhibit A, there, the spigots are pointed towards Safeway and Easterly, but yet they allow parking next to the fire hydrant on that thing. But there is no water spigot pointing that way. So in other words, it's about, basically, four feet away, instead of 14, in that parking lot. But like I said, they can get in there, even though, instead of being 14 feet, like the requirement is. But of course, this is private property. Safeway's parking lot is private property, so maybe the vehicle code doesn't pertain to private property. That's what I don't know.
I'm not sure either, to be honest with you.
Okay. The thing would be, like I said, if they try to get in on that Exhibit A, they can, but the spigot that's pointing east, there's only maybe about five feet between that Easterly spigot and that car that would be in there, but that's private. Okay, but then, the other thing was, like I said, I didn't get much cooperation in my letter to the people. They just said, you'd have to go to somebody higher than I, and I, they wouldn't give me the owners of the recycle cans. But I think something like this, as I say down here, it had, would have to go, we don't cover, we cover vehicles, but not recycle cans in front of your thing. And like I said, if there was ever a fire and they had to knock those cans down, it might even interfere with the thing. And I think you probably read the letter on page two, page two of the two-page letter that I had. But it's just my concern that maybe something should be done for maybe bushes and so forth, as, on page two, he says, fireman says, he says, "I tried to politely do, ask the man to do this, but if he doesn't, then I have to," which I don't think is his job to have to do. But then, if maybe somewhere rather, there's an ordinance, since that vehicle ordinance covers vehicles only, but not temporary things like recycle cans, et cetera, in front of the fire hydrants and where the spigot is pointing towards the recycle can, I think something maybe should be in an ordinance. As I said, that an ordinance would have to be adopted for something temporary. Maybe some other cities have done this. I don't know.
No, fair enough. You bring up a good point. I know Councilwoman Bruins has a question, and I also know, after reading your email, Councilmember Miller had an opportunity to actually speak with the fire department, because they were with us in Washington.
Yeah.
You're not going to like their answer, but that's okay.
Well, Mr. Nielsen, thank you for taking the time to write to us. We all saw your letter, and for coming tonight. I have a fire hydrant in front of my house, too, so I get to have, I have to landscape around it and not interfere with it, so I understand that. And the spigots do face the street, because that's the natural place for them to face, for a fire truck to come up.
Yeah, that's true.
I do know that if a car was parked in front of there, and there was a fire emergency, they would break right through the windows to get that hose.
Right, right.
So, but to address this, because they're not permanent structures, you know, they'll just mow them over, as you know, to get to the fire hydrant. The question I have for you, knowing that Crosswoods has a very strong homeowners association, have you brought this up to your board of directors there?
I, Mr. Shornow knows about it, but I don't think he can really stop anybody from putting something on a public roadway. That's the only thing. Maybe if you can address it to him.
Well, you know, we can, but you're a resident, and you've got a stake. I mean, you pay dues to this association every month. You're a dues-paying member of it.
Right.
And perhaps you could attend a board meeting? Because they could put, you know, they could put in their CCNRs whatever they want, that the board approves, and if one of them is that you are not to block a fire hydrant with your trash cans.
Yeah.
That's something that they may be able to address easier than we could.
Well, I don't know. It's really spooky. I don't know whether the residents could, the council could probably, or the board could probably say, hey, don't do it. But then, the resident could say, hey, I'm not putting it on a private street, I'm putting it on a public street. You have no jurisdiction on a public street for a trash can.
Okay, well, it was a thought.
That's the spooky part of it.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you. And you hit it right on the head. Trash cans are considered temporary, so SAC Metro doesn't consider them to be a hindrance, because they'll just knock them over if they're in the way, unlike a car, which is a little different. All right. Those were the, that was the only public speaker I had. Not seeing anybody else rushing to fill out a form and come forward, we'll go ahead and close the public comment, period. Next item, Amy.
So the next item is consent calendar items seven and eight.
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, abstained, motion carries, 4-0. Next item, please.
So the next item, number nine, is the subject is the city council appointment, and I am going to give an update on that. So the application period closed today at 5:00 PM, and at the close of the application period, we have received a total of 10 applications. And you'll see the list of names up there from which we have received applications. One of them is still pending verification from the voter and registrations office. So staff is seeking direction on holding a special city council meeting to conduct interviews of the applicants. So, before you hear, are some potential dates for the council's consideration to hold a meeting during the day to conduct interviews. And so, now, I turn it over for council discussion and direction.
Great. Thanks, Amy. I think, you know, initially, when we had fewer than 10 applications, my thought process would be, you know, we can just kind of do a forum meeting kind of early, but knowing that we have 10, my thinking is, you know, so we've all got the applications, I'm thinking what's worked with us in the past quite well is, you know, once we pick a date and a time, invite all 10 folks to come before us, basically give them a minute introduction, say 10 minutes for us to ask them any questions we have, and a minute closing, you know, pretty close to 15 minutes a pop, you can do the math, that's going to take roughly, you know, close to three hours to get through that, as it is. So, my, that's my recommendation. But the other thing I'd say is read through the applications, and if there's a question that you have, not specific to an individual, but specific to all of them, send it to Amy, you know, no more than one or two, and, you know, she can get it out to us, and we can send it to the applicants. But I would say, you know, as I read through this, there's, you know, some, I'm familiar with many of these folks, some of them never heard of before, so there's no rules or regulations. I mean, if you want to reach out to any of these folks, please do so. I plan on contacting the ones I don't know, just to get a little, you know, more information, if you will, about them. But let's talk about the dates and the times. You know, these were ones that pretty much where everybody said they could make themselves available. As much as I'd like to get this over and done, I honestly think to read through these and come up with anything, I think next Friday's probably a little quick.
And I can't do the 19th.
Okay, well, go on. Tuesday, the 23rd, we've got the groundbreaking in the morning, and I can't do that afternoon. So my suggestion is either going to be May 26th or June 2nd. I'm thinking the 26th is, the soonest we can do it, maybe start 12:31, you know, so folks can work a half-day, and then do this the rest of the day. How does that date sound for us?
The only thing that, as I mentioned earlier, and that's in the evening, is the basketball game, but that's, it starts till 6:00.
Yeah, well, if we're here by 6:00, we're in trouble.
Yeah.
If we're not out of here by then.
I can make it work.
Either one, 26th or the 27th.
It's the start of a three-day weekend.
Is that the three-day weekend?
Oh, yeah, it is.
I can make that work.
Yeah. Thanks.
Maybe if we do it in the morning, Jeff?
Yeah. Well, the only thing I was thinking is, you know, Brett just mentioned, that's okay for us, but I don't know about the candidates, so why don't we do this? Mornings are not good on Fridays, I can do afternoons. So let's pick, first of all, let's pick a time, you know, how about if we start 12:30? And then, Amy, what I, if I could ask you, let's go for the 26th as our first choice, June 2nd as our second, but as you notify the people, can you find out, realizing it's a Friday before a three-day weekend, if there's plans for some folks? You know, if we get two or three who can't make it, then we'll have to bump it to the second. Is that fair? I mean, because I'm not going to make somebody cancel their vacation plans for this, or then maybe we find out how bad they really want it, I don't know. But, you know, in all fairness, we're kind of making this without asking them, so I would think that, you know, we'd like to do it the 26th at 12:30, across the hall there, but if, as you're going through that, if, you know, we get two or three that have issues. And now, I see many of them here in the audience, so the ones who put in an app that are here, any of you have a problem with the 26th at 12:30? I seen, okay, 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 okay. Okay, so that's four, okay, five? Marcel, did I, I didn't, okay, so, half can make it. You know what? We're doing it the 26th, 12:30. That's it. The other half will figure it out.
Showing up helps.
Yes, showing up does help. But again, I would encourage the rest of you up here, this is not like, you know, we can't talk to these people, so whether you know them, whether you don't know them, I would, you know, reach out to anybody who wants to ask, you know, specific questions, but if there is something you think of that you'd rather ask all of them, you know, it might be nice to give them a heads-up before the 26th and get it out to them, so send it to Amy. Okay? And does that work? Basically, a minute intro, 10-minute question and answer, minute close? I mean, you know, it's 12, you've got to figure not everyone's going to get exactly a 12, so it's roughly 15 minutes a pop for 10 people. That's almost three hours.
Should work.
Little over three hours, actually. Okay.
We'll make it work.
Okay, thank you. So the next item is city manager items.
Yes, I do, counsel. I would like to provide you an update with regard to the medical office building here across the street. So, they are, dignity is set to begin construction. We expect construction mobilization to begin next week. I wanted you to know that I did meet, that my staff and I met with several, quite a number of residents from Burnham Drive, which is the homes right on the other side of the wall there from the site. We had a good meeting. The purpose was, I wanted them to, although I've known them all as their police chief, I wanted to, you know, pick up the conversation from where Mr. Tingle left it as the city manager, but most importantly, provide the residents an opportunity to ask questions of us, and make sure that they know that the channels of communication are wide open, and that we're going to be working with them. and that we're going to be working with them throughout this construction. They did have, as we anticipated and have heard in the past, a number of concerns, and we addressed those. But most of those concerns, we directed really to the next item, and that is, we have arranged for Dignity Health to conduct their own neighborhood meeting, so they can answer specific questions and address issues around construction. And that will be really an open house at the community center on Tuesday, May 16th, from 6:00 to 7:30 PM. So, Dignity Health will be there, as well as members of our staff. So, and again, the purpose there will be provide residents an opportunity to meet the project managers who are in charge, an opportunity for residents to ask questions one-on-one with those representatives. So, we want to assure, you know, the affected community here that we're all on the same team, and we're going to work together throughout the construction schedule. The last thing is, the Dignity Health is holding their medical office building groundbreaking ceremony on Tuesday, May 23rd, at 10:00 AM. And that'll be held really in the paved parking area in front of the police department. So, it's all moving, and they're finally ready to go. So, we'll keep the community informed, but I do want everyone to know that, you know, the communication channels are open. I realize that, you know, construction could be difficult at times for some, but we'll be there to help everyone through and to problem-solve, and work closely with the construction company and with dignity. So, thank you.
Great. Good to hear. I mean, not quite two years, but coming up in two years, so... I'll believe it on the 23rd. Next item, please.
Next item is items requested by council member or any future agenda items.
Yes, Mr. Daniels.
The city just installed some traffic control measures on Old Auburn Boulevard, just west of Sunrise Boulevard, for both east and westbound traffic. One side for the eastbound is a sea of white poles now all over the place, which is terribly ugly to me. And the other, and actually, both sides, but especially on the other side for the westbound traffic, has some traffic controls that are not logical for me, and I don't understand where they came from, because they don't allow for a regular pattern of driving, and I think they actually create a danger. And I'd like to see something back on how that decision was made, and another reexamination of it, especially for traffic coming out of the shopping center where the Safe Credit Union is and going in. It creates basically the need to do a 90-degree turn in both directions, and that's just not reality. And I go through that intersection nearly every day of my life, and I watch the cars as they're responding to these traffic controls, and they're being violated already, you know, probably up in the 90% range anyway. But I think they could cause a problem, and if they're followed actually the way that you're supposed to. So, if I can see something back on how that decision was made, and whether or not we think we really should stick with that. I know that area had an issue in the past when we put the big island in, and we found out people were just going to hit the island, and we shrank the island down. And so, if we could see something back on, if I could see something back on that, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, I mean, I go through there every day. I think it's improvement over what it was. Is it perfect? Not, but we'll certainly have somebody look into it and explain that. Not really sure. I want to relook at a project that's already been approved and done, but we'll certainly...
It's just basically paint on the road. It can be changed easily.
Yep. It's all about cost, too.
I'll take it.
Steve? You're done?
Good.
Okay. I thought you had something, sorry. All right, with that, seeing nothing else, we'll go ahead and close the meeting.